And you can remove it when you get to the microphone.
Okay.
Because I know a lot of times it's hard to.
Right.
It's muffled.
Okay.
At this time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. We want to welcome everyone here this evening. We have opened it up for a few people and we just want you to know that we're still doing the social distancing and wearing the masks and trying to do everything we can to protect our citizens and our staff. We have with us tonight Pastor Dwayne Smith from Lighthouse Baptist Church who will be leading us in our invocation, followed by our pledge of allegiance. If you all will, please rise.
Well, the first thing I want to say is I appreciate the invitation and you allowing me to come tonight and open in prayer, but I'm gonna do something a little different and I hope you don't mind me doing this.
Not at all. Glad you're here, sir.
But with all the uncertainty of everything that's going on in the world and with our nation, with the election coming up, with the COVID-19 hitting so many people, one of my spiritual heroes is Martin Luther, the founder of the Protestant Reformation. And he is well-known for a hymn that he wrote, and it's "The Mighty Fortress Is Our God." And he wrote that hymn during a time of persecution in Germany. But he also wrote it when the Black Death was going through Germany and was killing so many people. And while COVID-19 does not equate to the Black Death by no means, but it is still a time of uncertainty. So I would like to read that Psalm, it's a short Psalm, it's not very long, before I open up in prayer if you don't mind. This is Psalm, chapter 46, and this is the word of the Lord. It says, "God is our refuge and strength, the very present help in time of trouble. Therefore we will not fear, though the earth should change and though the mountains slip into the heart of the sea; though its waters war and foam, though the mountains quake at its swelling pride, saela. There is a river whose streams make glad the city of God, the holy dwelling places of the Most High. God is in the midst of her, she will not be moved. God will help her when morning dawns. The nations made an uproar, the kingdoms tottered. He raised His voice, the earth melted. The Lord of Hosts is with us, the God of Jacob is our stronghold, saela. Come, behold the works of the Lord, who has wrought desolations in the earth. He makes wars to cease to the end of the earth. He breaks the bow and cuts the spear in two. He burns the chariots with fire. See striving and know that I am God. I will be exalted among the nations. I will be exalted in the earth. The Lord of Hosts is with us. The God of Jacob is our stronghold, saela." Let's pray together, may we? Our Father in heaven, as we do come before you tonight, we bow our hearts and we bow our heads before your throne and acknowledge your greatness, acknowledge your holiness, acknowledge your mercy, and acknowledge that you are just. And we also acknowledge your sovereignty, that you are all-powerful, that you are everywhere, and that you are all-knowing. And Father, we also come before you, a people that needs you, a nation that needs you. We pray, Father, that we as a people and we as a nation will come before your throne and bow our heads and bow our knee before you and acknowledge that we are a sinful people in need of a great Savior. As that writer John Newton said before he passed, the great writer of amazing grace, he said, "There's one thing I do know for sure, and that is I am a great sinner in need of a great Savior." And we are a people that is in need of a great Savior. And Father God, we just acknowledge you tonight, and Father, we want you to be in our midst. Father, we pray for our authorities, as you said in your word in Romans, chapter 13, that we are to submit ourselves to the authorities that you have placed over us. And you have ordained the government to control the evils of society. And Father, we pray for our mayor, we pray for our town council, we pray for our law enforcement, we pray for our fire department and first responders, we pray for those that work in the park and rec department in all areas of this town. And Father, we also pray for our state, we pray for our county, we pray for our nation, and we pray for all of our leaders. And Father, we just want you to be in our midst and give wisdom and guidance as we direct the affairs of this town. And in the mighty name of Jesus, we do pray, and all God's people said.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maggie seated. And welcome our attorney, he is with us this evening by way of Zoom, so if we need him, he's out there.
Yep.
So thank you for coming this evening. At this time, do we have, I do have before me one addition to change a consent agenda item, keeping it on the consent agenda but just changing the wording of it, and that would be item H and its consideration of acceptance of a budget amendment number two and CARES Act Agreement Amendment number one. The town has received additional funding from Comon County through the Coronavitas Relief Fund, CARES Act, an amount of $152,163. And so that would be still behind tab three and under consent agenda. Is there any other item that you would like added or deleted or moved from our regular agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda with the addition.
Okay, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. I see none opposed. The next thing we have is a presentation, and this is proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the Town of Hope Mills understands that prudent safety measures can significantly cut the risk of fire, whereas 85% of fire deaths nationwide happen in the home, 40% of home fire deaths happen in homes with no smoke alarms, whereas fire spreads rapidly and a quick escape from the home increases the chances of survival. Whereas smoke alarms on every level and a home fire escape plan with regular drills are essential for every household in Hope Mills. Whereas the Fire Prevention Week 2020 theme is "Serve Up Fire Safety in the Kitchen" is an important reminder for all citizens of Hope Mills. Whereas the Hope Mills Fire Department is joining the National Fire Protection Association in outreach to its citizens with a message of fire safety through Fire Prevention Week 2020. Whereas the Hope Mills Fire Department is joined by other departments of the Town of Hope Mills, as well as other emergency service providers and safety advocates, businesses, schools, service clubs, and organizations in their fire safety efforts. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim the week of October 4th through 10th as Fire Prevention Week in the town and encourage all citizens to remember this year's theme, Serve Up the Fire Safety in the Kitchen. The next I have is PANDAS and PANS Awareness Day Proclamation. Whereas it is the custom of this governing body to recognize official days to increase awareness of serious illnesses that affect the lives of citizens of Hope Mills, such as PANDAS Pediatric Audioimmune Neuropsychiatric Disorders Associated with Streptococcal Infections and PANS Pediatric Acute Onset Neuropsychiatric Syndromes. And whereas a diagnosis of PANDAS or PANS means a child has a sudden dramatic change in personality displayed as obsessive-compulsive disorder, together with accompanying symptoms following a strep bacterial viral infection, the OCD can display an intense fear of anxiety. Accompanying symptoms may include tics, anxiety, depression, behavioral regression, deterioration in school performance, sensory sensitivities, severely restricted food intake, and more. Whereas researchers have begun to substantiate that this syndrome involves a misdirected audioimmune process that affects or weakens the blood-brain barrier. The inflammatory process irritates a region of the brain that manages a variety of functions such as movement, cognitive perception, habit, executive logic-based thinking, emotions, and the endocrine system. Whereas PANDAS and PANS is often misdiagnosed and undertreated. Treatment varies by the needs of the child, but may include antibiotics, steroids, intravenous immunoglobulin, plasmapheresis, cognitive behavioral therapy, and anti-inflammatory medications. Whereas it is imperative that there be greater public awareness of this health issue and more must be done to increase activity at the local, state, and national level. I have set my hand the fifth day of October in the year 2020 for us to be aware of this, of PANDAS and PANS Awareness Day. Next, we have public hearings. We have a public hearing on proposed annexation case A 2020-08, DSI Properties LLC, U.S. Highway 301 South. So do you have any information on that, or you just want me to open public hearing? Just open public hearing? At this time, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposed annexation case A 2020-08, DSI Properties LLC, U.S. Highway 301 South? Anyone in favor? Anyone opposed? Seeing none in favor or opposed in attendance, I have a motion to close public hearing. Next, I have consideration of possible action on adoption of annexation ordinance A 2020-08. And would you have any questions from our board?
Second motion.
Do we have an action?
Madam Mayor, make a motion to adopt the annexation ordinance A 2020-08.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Okay, the next thing we have is public comments, and this evening, do we have any that have been sent by email? Okay, so we do have one in person, and that's Mr. Rod McLean.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the, sorry, beg your pardon, commissioners, town staff, and the one or two civilians. My intent of speaking tonight is a couple of things. My first piece of information is in reference to tab eight and changing Main Street into a town road. It is time that this Board of Commissioners did the job they were elected to do, and that is represent the people, not represent individual agendas. This town can hardly keep up with its own roads right now. There is no way you can keep up in maintaining a DOT-type Main Street road. DOT has to take care of that. Just today, there was an email, somebody showing a six-inch break in the pavement in their local neighborhood, a town road. It shouldn't have got to that point. My other problem I've got is there is a case pending or has been tabled, P 93-92, which is changing a piece of property from a R 10 to a C 3. It is very interesting that that is directly related to changing 162 into a truck bypass. I begin to wonder what's going on with that one. As to Main Street itself, the bridge is passable under DOT standards for tractor-trailers. However, when I was with Taylor Express, we ensured that our trucks and trailers did not come down Main Street, and I would support asking DOT to change Highway 59 into a non-truck route and for the trucks to be diverted to 162. Just that, no volunteering to take on any added responsibilities that you can't handle. And finally, I have watched quite a few of these chamber meetings online, and to be perfectly honest, I'm disgusted. You are our elected representatives. We, the people, put you folks up there to represent us. You say we need to wear masks. Right now, Mr. Chancellor is not wearing a mask. At the beginning of the meeting, one of the commissioners was not wearing a mask. You are our representatives. The standard is higher for you. Thank you, sir. Just goes to prove exactly what I was saying. The elected are meant to maintain a higher standard, and you have failed to do that. Thank you very much indeed. By the way, I apologize, I have another appointment, so I have to leave at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, our consent agenda. We, yes. Oh, okay. Okay. Hope Mills Prime Movers. I apologize, I didn't see the name and I just assumed it was all under Mr. McLean's comments.
First and foremost, good evening, and we bring your greetings from the Hope Mills Prime Movers Committee, and alongside me with me is Mr. Elizabeth Armstrong and Mr. Kenneth Rogers. Other members were unable to attend due to previous engagements and due to send their regards and their absence. They would love to be here, but they couldn't make it. A lot of them work night school and things of that nature.
I'm sorry, just a little bit better for you?
Yes.
All right. On October 1st, 2020, was the sort of a new era for the Town of Hope Mills. The town clerk, Ms. Jane Starling, and our very own Ms. Town Manager Melissa Adams, along with our Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. McCray, Commissioner Lee Zian, Representative, and Mr. Chancellor McGlocklin, the town staff representatives initiated a start of the 2020 Hope Mills Prime Movers Committee. To all of you and to the Board of Commissioners, we would like to say thank you for allowing this committee to partake, and we really do thank you for that. Since inception just a few days ago, this committee has planned out several events and are eagerly working to make this committee like no other. An insert from our mission statement is improving communications from the Board of Commissioners regarding the quality of life for young adults. We do understand that the young people are strong, but the seasoned adults are very wise. A good role model of ours, Muhammad Ali, said, "Live every day as if it's your last, because someday you're going to be right." Those chosen committee members, us three along with the other four, will do that as if it's our last day. Again, we want to say thank you for allowing this committee to, and most certainly, thank you for choosing this team as your Hope Mills Prime Movers for Hope Mills Prime Movers 2020. Again, this is a card just to say thank you, nothing special, but a nice gesture on behalf unto you guys, thank you for allowing us to do what we need to do, and we will not disappoint you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, next, we have our consent agenda. We did have the one item that has been changed, but the remaining items, is there anything that you would like moved to new business, or do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. The next item on our agenda is case, it's old business, and it's case P 20-32, initial zoning of 43.92 plus or minus acres to R 6 Residential or to a more restrictive zoning district located on the north side of North Carolina, 162 Elk Road, north of Eagle Landing Drive, submitted by RC Land Ventures LLC and William F. Beach and Bobby R. Beach owners, I'll turn it over to Mr. McGlocklin.
I'll keep this very brief. This is just the final piece of, if you recall, the Sweetwater Annexation, there was some hiccups with it. At the last hearing, we had, well, we actually have officially annexed it in, but at the last time that this initial zoning appeared on the agenda, if you recall, there was an attorney that came who indicated that. There were.
Sounds like you're done.
Indicated that there were five acres of the design that were not authorized for the development. We have since, the developer has since removed those five acres from it. The annexation has been officially adopted by you guys at the last hearing, but the initial zoning typically comes two months later after we go to planning board and it comes back here. Well, if you recall, on the 17th of August, I think, you guys never made, took action on this initial zoning when it was on the agenda. So technically, it's still a live case. So I talked to the county, they confirmed that we didn't have to go through the process over again. You guys could just pretty much reconsider the initial zoning minus the five acres. So that's what's before you tonight. Nothing has changed. The recommendation from planning board has not changed, but when you read the motion into the record, just state that this is minus the five acres, and that should allow everything to be fine. But again, this is the same initial zoning that you heard before, but we basically, because you didn't take action on it, we fixed all the issues with the initial zone, with the subdivision. He's, I guess they're close to permitting the whole development. So we have actually fixed the issue, but from a procedural standpoint, basically, we just need you guys to officially approve it, read it into the record. But the caveat is to make sure that when you read the motion from the planning board, that you say minus the five acres to make it official.
Okay, someone.
Can I make a motion to that?
Have you got the motion in front of you to read?
Well, I've got the information on it, but.
Think you have to open it.
Huh?
Public hearing.
We got closed.
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize. All right, so we want to have a public hearing first. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this zoning of case P 20-32? Is there anyone here to speak against this zoning? Seeing none?
Motion to close public hearing.
Okay, close public hearing. And at this time, do we have any action to be taken? And we'd need you to read the motion that is actually provided by the planning board.
Yes, the staff report that you have, like I said, just read that motion, but just somewhere in there, state that it's minus the five acres.
Okay, I'll make a motion that in case P 20-32, the Town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners recommends approval of the initial zoning of R 6 Residential and find that the, we find the request consistent with the Cumberland Southwest Land Use Plan of 2014, designation of medium-density residential and open space. The medium-density residential designation allows for a density of greater than six but less than 15 units per acre for public water sewers available. Approval of this request is also reasonable and in the best public interest as the district requested in harmony with surrounding existing zoning and land use plan and parcels are served by public water and sewer, less five acres that was in the original plan.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? At this time, all in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed.
Thank you.
Next, we have new business, a consideration to accept the annexation request, A 2020-09, Sheffield Farms North, Section 5, and to adopt resolution R 2020-32, directing the clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the application. Do we have any discussion on this item? If not, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider, to accept annexation request A 2020-09 Sheffield Farms North, Section 5, and to adopt resolution R 2020-32, directing the clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the application.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next, we have consideration of approval of resolution R 2020-33, fixing the date of a public hearing on the matter of Sheffield Farms North, Section 5, annexation petition at 7:00 PM, October 19th, 2020, and to direct the planning director to begin rezoning for the proposed Sheffield Farms North, Section 5, annexation. Do we have any discussion on this? Do I have an action?
Motion to approve resolution 2020-33.
Second.
Okay, and that would be fixing the date of the hearing, 7:00 PM, October 19th, 2020, and starting, to begin rezoning for proposed Sheffield Farms North, Section 5. Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. I'm gonna speak about item C because this is what I requested, and I also want to refer you to the fact that the resolution, what I proposed after consideration and after talking to our town manager and to Mr. Cisco, and understanding that we needed to remove part of what I thought was a good idea because of, again, the unknowns. And one of those unknowns would be if we did take over as a town the street from Rockfish to Camden, that we would be responsible for it. I had found some information that we would be getting more power money and that we would also be getting some assistance, but we need to have that knowledge upfront before you change it to a town street. So I said, let's just do the other part of this that's important, and it'll help the town as far as safety and reasons. So the resolution, if you look at what is actually before us as a resolution, what we're asking DOT is if they will make 162 a truck route, which would mean it would be a bypass of Hope Mills. One, and then 59 would become the business 59, which means that in order for you to have a truck coming on 59, the big 18-wheelers, you would have to have a reason for being here. You'd be delivering to a store. It would also mean just by the, and I was made this aware from DOT, is it would also mean that in GPS systems and others, by identifying as a truck route, then when somebody put it in to get to Rayford Road, instead of them coming down 59, it would automatically put them over on bypass 59, the truck route. And 162 was geared to be a bypass from the start. But if you read the resolution, you'll see that this is, also opens up the possibility for us to, just like we did at the end of Main Street, to apply for different types of things for pedestrian crosswalks and other things, because now by removing the trucks, you make Main Street a little bit safer, and it also means that it, the damage that is happening, and most, I guess, yes, they, most trucks, you would think, no, that they shouldn't go, they shouldn't try to avoid the underpass by taking Johnson Street or taking, some of them even take us and go by your house, go by, cut through South Main, because they know they can't fit under the underpass. And we have instances, most recently in July, where a truck actually got stuck with carrying, it was a new car carrier and the top car didn't make it. So the idea would be those types of trucks wouldn't be coming, circulating through, and it might also mean that some traffic that doesn't have a reason to come through Hope Mills would take 162. So that's what this amounts to. What we have to do, we have to send a resolution, and I don't know if you want me to read it to you, or if you can read it from your tab, but we have to request that this change is made, and the board has to request it. It can't come from, we met with Greg Burns and we met with Richie Hines, and we had a meeting talking about what we could do, but before it can go up to the state, it has to come from the board. They have to approve this resolution.
But Madam, the important thing is we're not taking over the main.
No.
That's a question.
We remove that.
We remove that. That was the original.
From your original request.
Yeah, my original request, because in the original request, I had it in there for them to change 59 to just make it Main Street from Rockfish to Camden.
Yeah.
I took that off, like I said, after I talked to the other people. I had learned that in another town in North Carolina, that's what they've done, because they were having so much growth. because they were having so much growth and it was having so many people that what they were trying to do is control what the street looked like. And so I did not investigate far enough to find out the other things you have to do. So that's why I said, let's take that off of this, just so we can get the trucks moved and then we can progress to do whatever we need to do. But no, we're not accepting any maintenance, nothing.
I, that was my question. I wanted to, because I know we've talked about this before briefly in another meeting or setting, I can't remember which one it was. Might have been at the retreat, we even talked about doing this. But I would request, if you don't mind, if you would read the resolution so that people not in attendance or at home will hear it.
Okay.
Yeah, will hear it and know that we are not taking ownership.
No.
And what that resolution state.
Madam Mayor, I just, for point of clarity, and I agree with what Mr. Marley's saying. Just for clarity, I just want to make sure that we're clear that DOT maintains ownership and maintenance of Highway fifty-nine and one sixty-two.
Right, well, it, we're not.
If that's correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
There's nothing in this resolution, and I'll read the resolution so you'll get the final resolution. It's a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Hope Mills requesting the North Carolina Department of Transportation to rename portions of Highway fifty-nine, resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-one. Whereas the town wishes to improve the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists using this heavy traffic area, whereas the town wishes to convert the roadway section in town to follow our multimodal congestion plan recommendation. Whereas drivers bypass Highway fifty-nine by using secondary streets such as Trade or Johnson Streets in order to avoid heavy traffic. And whereas there is damage to our roadways and to Highway fifty-nine from large trucks, whereas there is inadequate clearance of the CSX Railroad underpass for tractor-trailers, and whereas the town wishes a broader solution to control growth and local development. Therefore, be it resolved, the Town of Hope Mills Commission requests to change the designation of Highway fifty-nine between three oh one and Rayford Road to Business fifty-nine and to name highways one sixty-two additionally truck route or bypass fifty-nine. And this has to be passed and approved by the Board of Commissioners before it can be forwarded on to the state. So we're only asking for those name change. And once they designated a truck route, then all trucks would be expected to go to one sixty-two rather than come down Main Street. And the other good news would be, it would also, with what they're doing with two ninety-five and with the roadway currently, it would mean that on GPS, if they wanted to get just to Rayford Road, they weren't coming to Hope Mills, it would send them to one sixty-two. So you'd eliminate some of the traffic, hopefully, off of our regular Main Street because of this one change.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Let me completely understand this as well. I read all of this, but so we're not going to take over any of the maintenance?
None, no. Only thing we're asking them to do is change the name. And they've changed the names on other streets that they control that they needed to make a truck route or a bypass. So you'll go through many places where you'll see a bypass that will be for trucks and then a business area. So no, we're not assuming anything. We're not, in fact, what was in the resolution was a request for the town to take over, and that's what was removed. And that was what, because it was still in the agenda item, people read it and assumed, they didn't read the actual resolution, they just read what I sent.
Send your email.
Right.
Correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, I was confused about all of that.
Yeah, well, the actual resolution is what I just read. The one that I submitted actually did have a request for the town to take over from Rockfish Road to Camden Road with the thought that we would not take over the area where we know there's an issue on Main Street in front of the lake. But we would assume responsibility. But like I said, talking to Mr. Cisco, talking to Ms. Adams, and talking to somebody from DOT, it was determined that at this point in time, we just need to convert it to truck route and bypass.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If nobody else has anything, I'd like to make a motion that this board approve resolution R twenty twenty dash thirty-one as you have just read.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand and seeing none opposed. And this will go to, we send it to Greg Burns, but then it's to be directed to the next, to DOT at state level. All righty, thank you. Next, we have our manager's report. And is there anything you need to add to that, Ms. Adams?
I don't have an addition, but I'd like to draw attention to two items in my manager's report.
Okay.
The update on the remote domestic violence filing site. The police department is working through the logistics on the proposed partnership. And I just want to draw attention to that because we are, we're going to be providing the location for the spot. It's going to be available three days a week for a total of twelve hours for the site. And they're going to provide the computer equipment, but we are going to have to fund a part-time paid position for that. So that is kind of, you know, turning out to be a little bit of a logistical. But we're going to find the money. We're, it's not, you know, it's going to be doable. But there's training that's going to be starting in November. So we're talking about it right now. So we'll get that worked out. But it's not quite as easy as it first originally, you know, looked like it was going to be. So I wanted to just draw attention to that. I think it's a very noble thing to be doing, so I'm very excited about it. The other thing I wanted to draw attention to is the meetup spot for the internet purchase exchange that Mayor Warner had approached me about. And once we get signage for that put up, then we'll start advertising that. So just wanted to kind of draw attention to those two items. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, thank you. We have our reminders.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I've got a comment and two questions.
Okay, all right.
State it and the two questions.
Okay.
First comment, the comment, let's go over there first. Under Parks and Rec, I'm really pleased to see that McAdams Group was selected for not one, but both projects. It was, it was an excellent selection. They have, McAdams Group has performed a tremendous amount of work here in the town with every, every project that we've asked them to do. And I think that without any question, Heritage Park should go to them. And I'm glad to see that the splash pad design will go to McAdams as well. So that's the comment. The two questions, we'll read them. And one of them are from parents and kids. Are we conducting trick-or-treat in the neighborhoods?
We don't control trick-or-treating.
Okay.
We do not, we do not have any control over that. We don't tell people whether or not they can trick-or-treat. So that's completely up to the neighborhoods whether or not they do that.
In the past, it's been what, six to eight or something like that, I believe? So that was the question, okay. Next one, was there any update on the Crampton Road project?
No, there is not an update unless the chancellor has heard from who's left.
He's left, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Nope.
Where do we go from here, I guess?
Yeah, I don't know.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh huh, you're welcome.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Next, we have, of course, the reminders for the different things coming up. And then we have our committee liaison updates. First, start with Commissioner Pat Edwards with Appearance Committee and Mid-Carolina Council of Government.
Okay, we had the Appearance Commission meeting and they're still planning on doing the Christmas trees down Main Street. And they're going to contact different businesses and organizations to decorate the orange tree. And that's the main thing they're working on. And we had a few moments to talk about Kathy Johnson, who's retired. She was the committee chairman and she has dropped out. And Tina Yost is going to be taking over. But they were going on about what a great chairman that she was and they were very sorry that she was leaving. But she says if there's any way she could help, she would come back and help them. That's all for the Appearance Commission.
How about Mid-Carolina?
Mid-Carolina, we had a telephonic conversation. Of course, Mid-Carolina is all for the seniors. And they were talking a lot about the different senior centers, but since Hope Mills does not have one, I wasn't really that involved in it. But they were telling about seniors and all the different falls that they're having. And they gave out ten different falls prevention pamphlets that if there's any seniors out there, which I don't see any, but I guess I'm the only one that's going to take one. But I'll give one to Jerry too. But other than that.
Thanks.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Are you officially a senior? It's just that they're telling you that instead of shuffling, to make higher steps because we have a tendency not to step up like we should. And there's, hush. And we have a lot of falls. And that's all from Mid-Carolina. They're really progressing and they're doing a lot for the seniors.
Okay, Commissioner Lee with Historic Preservation and Rulak?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Pat, for the extra workload. We had no Rulak meeting that I was aware of. I was not notified of any.
They didn't send you anything?
No.
Oh goodness, we need to check on that.
No.
I don't think they have. No?
I don't think they have one.
Can you check on that? Okay.
And the Historical Preservation Commission, we met late last week at Ms. Reeves' house across from the church. But there was only three voting members there besides myself. We discussed, we had a long conversation between the people that were there, but no votes were taken. And it was very interesting because Gerald got some information he didn't know about the history of Hope Mills that he was glad to pick up on. So I don't know when the next meeting is. Do you have a date for that, sir?
Yes, sir, it's going to be on the fourteenth at five p.m.
Fourteenth.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have on that. Is there any questions?
Okay.
They're very anxious to get started on the park over there.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am?
Anytime there's a change in location, I should be made aware of it at least seventy-two hours in advance so I can send out a public meeting that is within forty-eight hours. In the public, the sunshine lifts and all the meetings.
Okay.
I didn't know they were meeting at someone's house.
Yeah, I should have notified you of that. Our secretary is, also works for an attorney. She hasn't been there the last two meetings, but because of her workload. I will keep that in mind to do it in the future. We also have two members that we need to ask the chairman to take a look at and maybe call and find out what we have to do because we have a rule that we have to go by and we have to treat all the committees the same.
Yeah, I don't think they've been attending.
Yeah, they haven't been attending at all. One of them in particular, I don't think has ever been there.
Yeah, okay.
So that would be all. Is there any other questions? Thank you.
That was something that I had been asked too. And I was thinking, the part that's in our, the requirements for the committees, we might need to make sure we just send that to the committee so they'll know. Because, you know, the chairman of the committee is who makes the recommendation.
The chairperson, that's what I was telling Commissioner.
Yeah.
Ms. Reeves.
He had called me and asked me about that. It's the chairperson's responsibility to notify the board of any member that is not attending, that has missed so many meetings.
And so I'm just thinking, maybe we send that, that little blip that's in there so the chairperson will know that if it is an attendance issue.
Yep.
Okay, all righty, sounds good.
Thank you, Madam.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have Mayor Pro Tim Dr. McCray, Parks and Recreation Advisory, Comon County Air Quality Stakeholders, and the Prime Movers.
Okay, the Air Quality Stakeholders is quarterly, so we haven't met again, but they did have an event Saturday. And I was talking so much at the last meeting, I forgot to mention the electric car show. But they did have that on this past Saturday. The Parks and Recs Committee, Mr. Morrison gave us a thorough report here. And I would just like to mention that originally the Hope Mills drive-through candy grab bag was for Friday. So if someone originally had that information, make sure you pay attention, that is now on Saturday. Saturday morning, and they have a lot of events, Keeping Up The Bones, Let's Get Glowing. There's a cancer event going on October the seventeenth. And there's a lot of fitness programs for senior citizens as well. So his report is very thorough, but they have a lot going on. And to remind everyone that early voting will be taking place.
And there's also, there's also a lot of virtual events going on. So people need to send in their pictures for the pumpkin carving contest and the pet costume carving.
Which is really cute.
Pet costume contest, so.
Yes, so they're really busy. And with the Prime Movers Committee, I told Mr. McGee, he's the president, I will let him speak. And they have two other members here with them tonight, but you can go ahead and give the report, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you again. I guess you don't want to beat a dead horse. A couple of you have already spoken about the bridge. And that was one of our main topics that some of our members have spoke about as far as the bridge overpass. I mean, it's kind of an eyesore to the Hope Mills community. You want to bring people in. Of course, we're moving with different organizations, different businesses. So some of, one of the ideas that the Prime Movers has already started, talked about is painting that bridge. I'm not sure who the bridge belongs to, if it's DOT, if it's the town, if it's Norfolk Southern, whoever. But one of the ideas, get it press washed, cleaned, and get some high school kids, sophomore, come in and each of them get a pillar. Maybe this month or this quarter, Hope Mills metal come in and paint it. Get the community engaged. That's one thing, get it engaged because it's the youth. Youth is not our future, it's there now. That was the thing about the bridge. So I guess you guys get the picture about the bridge. You spoke about the bridge and the gentleman earlier spoke about the bridge. So that's the bridge. Another thing that we spoke about as well is what our town manager spoke about with the domestic violence thing site. We spoke about that last week. And we do have our group meet chat and we speak among ourselves. If you don't know what group meet is, it's just basically a big, large group text message. We all communicate like a chain email. That was one of the things that we talked about because just like Fayetteville, Raleigh, anywhere, you may have domestic violence, have women that want to come in to that particular place. So we want to get our youth involved because domestic violence is not just for old people, it's for young people, it's for everyone else. Not old, seasoned people. I don't like to use that word, seasoned. I don't want you to be mad at me.
I like that, seasoned.
There you go, seasoned.
I take that.
Another thing that we spoke about as well is for our military, build a gap, build a bridge for the military and our community. I know someone up here, I know the mayor, for example, her father has military ties. So we know everyone is connected to the military somehow, whether it's brother, sister, mother, cousin, best friend, someone. So that's something that we want to do, is getting our military involved with the community as well. And another thing we want to, me being from Rayford, I grew up in Rayford, stayed in Rayford all my life until decided to get married, moved to DC, made Hope Mills our home. But when I was growing up in Rayford, we knew Hope Mills as Waldo's Beach or the lake. That's the only thing we really knew it as. So we want to do something a little bit more broad and other than the lake, not Waldo's Beach. I don't know if they're still open. So Waldo's Beach, if they're open, great. If they're not, great. We have the lake, which is great, lake is great, but we need something more than just the lake. So one thing that we're trying to possibly, possibly put into the works is some kind of history, a routine thing. Like everybody knows in Rayford, North Carolina Turkey Festival. So everybody go to Hope County in September, hey, we want to the Turkey Festival, get me a turkey leg or whatever. Everybody know we going to Raleigh, everybody goes, knows about Raleigh in November is the what? State Fair. So something that we want to do in Hope Mills, and we talked to some of the committee members and brought up to them on the group meet chat, is something like, some type of festival. Whether it be, you know, a summer festival, Juneteenth festival, something to get Hope Mills known for other than just bad things at one point was the lake, which was not bad. But now, with our great administration, the lake is ready to roll, it's doing great. So we want to get something good for the Town of Hope Mills on a positive note, an annual event. A lot of colleges, they have their. A lot of colleges, they have their annual homecoming. Everybody knows you go to, especially HBCUs, you're gonna go there, you're gonna see the band, you're gonna see the cheerleaders, you're gonna definitely get a tug at the food. So we gotta get something for Hope Mills. Of course, we don't have a college here, but we have colleges within driving distance, Felve State, Methodist, UNCP, Felve Tech, all of these local colleges within driving distance, within an hour range of each other. So we want to do something in the summer months. And of course, we know it's not going to happen next week, not going to happen tomorrow, but it's going to be a short period of time, a long period of time. And lastly, October ninth at the Alm's House across the street, I'm not sure if any of our members will be here, but I know I'll be there starting at eleven-thirty. We're gonna go out and represent ourselves as the Prime, Hope Mills Prime Movers. And we're gonna go out and donate and help and, you know, participate with giving away food from the Alm's House to carrying out to people's cars. So those are some of the, some of the things that we want to do. I know I talk a lot and I promise you I'm about done. Of course, you know, we're gonna come out with the holidays, Thanksgiving, Christmas and things of that nature. I'm not sure, I haven't spoken with the committee yet, but I do know that, I'm certain that they will say, yeah, that we want to give some atneed family something, not from the hot town of Hope Mills, it'll be just directly from the Prime Movers. And of course, we're gonna put Hope Mills Town, Hope Mills Prime Movers, but we're gonna give something to them, whether it's a gift basket, a gift card, something to make their Thanksgiving just a little bit better because we understand that COVID finances for people are not all that great. So we want to do something on behalf of us. And, you know, it's kind of like, hey, when you see a person, the first thing you're gonna see is their parents. So whenever you see Hope Mills Prime Movers, we want you to remember, hey, Hope Mills, you know, they're Prime Movers, they're okay. But, you know, they gave us a thank you card when they came to that first meeting. We thought about them. So whenever we come to you guys asking for money, y'all be like, we need, that was a good first impression. So I'm talking myself into a hole, so thank you and that's it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. My Mayor's Youth Leadership Committee met by way of Zoom tonight. We had, of course, that's Southview, Jack Britton, Grace Creek Youth. And we did mention to them those, because this group this year is predominantly seniors. And we mentioned to them that they can transition into Prime Movers because of the, we want to keep them involved. But they'll have, tonight was more of an introduction type of meeting, but they had some good ideas about, they're gonna do some things, make keeping Hope Mills beautiful as far as the litter sweeps and some ideas of ways that they can start focusing on people doing the right things and doing it a little bit different way. FAMPO, I haven't had another meeting since the last one. And then Federal Comming Economic Development, that, we did get a message today that the new person that is now the Assistant Director is going to meet or wants to meet with Melissa and I before we actually have our first meeting. But that is a committee made up of mayors and representatives from the small municipalities that works with Federal Comming Economic Development, which is Robert Van Gheens is over. So it's a federal centered thing, but it works with the economic development across the county. And that's, that's all of that one. Staff comments, do you have any staff?
May I interrupt?
Uh huh, sure.
Did we miss Mr. Marley?
Yes, we did. I left him out. Mr. Marley, I am so sorry, I jumped right over you.
It's okay.
No, I didn't either. Yes, I did too, way up there. I left you out completely.
It's okay.
Mr. Marley, will you tell us about the Veterans Affairs?
I wish I could tell you more, but I was not in attendance at the meeting. I left that day to go out of town for my anniversary. But I since talked with the manager and in the manager's report, everybody knows that the Veterans Memorial repairs have been made. So I wanted to let all our veterans know that their memorial has had repairs made to it and hopefully it'll continue to last for a long time. And I had requested sometime back that the manager, see if Mr. Cisco could attend the meeting. Just got me some notes here.
They'll get you every time.
Yep. And it looks like Elizabeth Blevins was nice enough to send us an email update. I appreciate that. Says Veterans Day will be conducted through Facebook Live with a scaled back program. Due to the uncertainty of COVID restrictions, the Veteran Affairs Committee is creating a Facebook event for all of the Veterans Day events to start informing the public of the edited format. As I was saying earlier, Mr. Cisco and his.
Bruce Clark.
Mr., yeah, Mr. Clark briefed the committee that the Veterans Monument was repaired. However, the Veteran Affairs Committee examined the monument after the meeting and it needed some additional work, specifically someone pressure washed it and left markings on it. Don spoke to me about it the other day and it looks like at some time in the past, somebody took it upon herself to either pressure wash it or put some harsh chemicals on it that took some of the finish off. And I'm sure they'll see if there's anything they can do for that. Don and Bruce also briefed updates to the ADA issues at the park over there about the plan. They're going to look at adding handicap parking closer to the Veterans Park and possibly coming up with long-term plans to address several other issues identified by the committee. So she just put a note on here for Jane to ask her to print this out, so myself and I had asked Ms. Edwards to attend the meeting. I don't know if she was able to or not.
Yeah, that's.
Okay. But I appreciate the email and sorry I missed the meeting. I enjoy those meetings. And I like the Prime Movers and our other committees, they're really, they're really involved and really looking out for our veteran population. So that's good. And that might be something, you know, with what the Prime Movers was talking about with trying to bridge that gap. So might be good if, because our Veteran Affairs Committee has a lot of ideas. They're wanting to reach out to the veterans as well in the community. And so it might be good that maybe y'all attend a meeting, one of their meetings and sit down with them and talk with them. And I know, I know Mr. McGeechee, he lives in my neighborhood, he's my neighbor. And Greeley Mitchell is our neighbor as well and I know he's, you know, he knows him very well. Maybe y'all could line up at a meeting sometime to come in and just collaborate, sit down and come up with some things. But like I said, that's my report. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now staff comments.
Yeah, I don't have anything on that, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes, okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. McGeechee made me think about it. I forgot that the World Hunger Day or World Food Day will be celebrated Friday at the YMCA beginning at eleven o'clock. Again, it is the FTCC Culinary Department and they'll have some delicious soup. It's for anybody in the community. It's a community service effort on the FTCC Culinary Park and a way to team up with the Alm's House and to serve our communities. So if anybody is available, it'll be, they'll have bags for you, it'll already be prepared. So if you want to come out, it's gonna be from eleven o'clock until the food is gone on Friday at the YMCA parking lot. I did forget to mention that.
Okay.
I do have one question.
Okay.
We do have an employee that on Wednesday is celebrating forty years with the town. Cindy Murray.
The one and only.
Yep.
That's a good one too.
Yeah, she is. Yep. So we are doing a little something, the staff is doing a little something for her, so.
It's Friday, Wednesday.
HR, HR is, we're, HR and myself are talking about how we can possibly do something with our employee recognition this year. We're trying to figure out how to move forward with it at Thanksgiving and not cancel it completely. So we're in talks with that right now. So, but we're gonna do a little something to celebrate her on Wednesday, so. I didn't want to forget that. I'm sorry.
That's a very good young lady right there.
She is, yep. I think she's probably done every position with the town from when the town had water billing and, gosh, yep.
I've thought a lot of times about the possibility that, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I've thought a lot of times about the possibility that we have an Employee of the Month. But how much hassle would that be if we did something like that? Because another employee is gonna feel like, sorry, feel like that they were overlooked. So something we can look into, but we'd better do it gently.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry.
You're welcome. Now I was just reading that I'm responsible for, they've slid this responsibility in here for me. But I get to decorate with three life-size possible skeletons, a child skeleton and an animal skeleton and adult skeleton.
That leaves me out.
And I gotta have my display ready by October nineteenth.
That leaves me out.
So this is good. I'm glad I read through this. Fun times. They knew that Halloween is one of my favorites. The, any other staff comments?
What about Dan?
That's why I'm waiting for Mr.
I'm just, I'm sorry not to be there for the person tonight. Look forward to being back home.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank, I was just gonna mention that we, Dr. McCray and I put out something in reference to the Census 2020 because we got a message that we needed to encourage more Hope Mills citizens to sign up. And it's obvious when we're growing so quickly, we had seventeen, almost seventeen thousand people and our count was just a little over half of that number of people. And there was some concerns about all the things we miss out on if we don't get our count in. So we put something out and then we're gonna hand to a flyer that we're gonna hand out Friday with anybody. They have extended the day for the census count, but we're gonna try to hand something to those as they come for the meal and then try to do something at the schools when they come, the parents come to the schools. Because if we can, we need to get our count in and it's easy to do. It's not something that's very hard that, and we even have have a computer here at town that they can come.
Yep.
But the idea is we've got to encourage that Census 2020 count to make sure because when it was done last in 2010, we have grown so, we've almost doubled since 2010. So that gives you an idea of what we look like. I do want to thank, because the lady called me today, I want to thank our Chief Inspector and also Ray and also Chancellor because Stop Button was able to open back up and they had to meet some requirements to do it. But the lady that owns it wanted to let us know how much she appreciated how well they worked with her and how she was doing everything according to the rules that came down from the governor's office. But they were real pleased with our town staff. The other thing is we need to keep Katie Jones in our prayers. She is, she works with, Katie Burge Jones, she works with, and you know, she's been our backup a lot of times, but she's going through some health issues right now. And this is Cancer Awareness Month. So I think if we can spend some time keeping her in your prayers, that everything goes well for her. And then official comments, I'll start with Commissioner Legg. Do you have anything tonight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Didn't mean to speak out of turn a while ago.
That's all right.
Like to thank Reverend Smith from Lighthouse Baptist Church for coming to say in our invocation tonight. Good to see our committee members present. We need more activity and more participation from our committees, although sometimes we have to adjust them. But we still have to work with them and I don't think they know how much they do for us. Sometimes I just get lost without committee recommendations. A little update on my daughter, she's, she's doing better, but she may have to have a heart transplant and she's only thirty-nine years old. You would think when she was born, they would have known she had valves missing out of her heart. But we weren't notified that as parents. We just were told she wouldn't live two hours. That was thirty-nine years ago. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll keep her in our prayers also, Commissioner Legg. Commissioner Marley?
Yes, ma'am. I don't, I don't mind, I'm a elected official, so I don't mind answering to the public. But I want to apologize to one of our employees, one of the employees of the town tonight that was called out in public by one of the citizens. And in my opinion, if that's gonna happen, that's the town manager's job, not one of the citizens. If the citizens of this town has a problem with an employee of this town, they don't need to come to a board meeting and address the board, they need to call our town manager and address it with our town manager. And our town manager will handle the problem if there is a problem. But I'd just like to apologize to the employee that was here tonight. I'm sure it was embarrassing for him as it was, you know, I was embarrassed for him. There was no call-in doing that. And like I said, I'm a public official, I answer to the citizens of this town and I can take it. But our employees should not have to put up with that. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Commissioner Bell Flowers?
Thank you, Mayor. I was really impressed with Prime Movers tonight and your presentation. I could tell, there's a lot of energy, there's a lot of forward vision within your committee. My recommendation to your committee would be to probably schedule some joint meetings with Veterans Affairs Committee and Parks and Rec Committee and share your thoughts. Collaborate, just like Commissioner Marley was saying earlier. I mean, you guys sit in a very powerful position to, when we work together with the three committees, it's, the sky would be the limit on what projects you guys could collaborate with and find out that you got common ground on a lot of them. So I offer that to you. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Edwards?
I too would like to thank the Prime Movers, but this being your first meeting and everything, the more you get involved with the town, the more you get involved with the people and the other activities, you'll come up with your own ideas and your own viewpoints of how to move forward. And there's nothing wrong with change and we're proud to have you all here.
Mayor Pro Tim?
I think I've spoken enough, but again, I, you know, I appreciate the Prime Movers, keep your fire. That's what I say to you. Don't overdo it, but keep your, keep your fire. And I would like to thank all of our volunteers on our committees. And that is something I want to talk to you all about. If you wanted to send a liaison to each committee to kind of sit in at a meeting and kind of hear what they're talking about and bring the information back to the group, I think that would really be good. But that's all I have to say.
Okay. Also, just to remind you that October ninth is the last day to register to vote and that's really for those people that are out there on YouTube or wherever. You can register up till 5:00 PM, I think, on that day. But the main thing is you have to be registered to vote in order to vote. So make sure you take care of that and we do encourage you all. The next, our next, our first meeting in November typically is the night before election night. So it's coming really quickly. So I just remind you, and then we do have, starting October fifteenth, early voting and it will be at our Parks and Rec building. With that, if there's, I too appreciate Mr. Smith coming tonight. I think it's important that all of you are aware that many of our churches have started back service. We do have a couple of churches that just because the people that are over the whole organization of that church, they haven't been allowed to go back, so they're still doing special types of meetings, especially online types of meetings. But just know that there's still things happening in Hope Mills that aren't back to normal. And it's sad, even changing to stage three, we still got lots of businesses that are hurting right now. And lots, I hope Millstone is coming back, but I did hear today that there is a change, the Regal change is closing completely.
Yeah.
All of their stores. So we just hope Millstone manages to survive through it.
I do too.
Yeah. But anyway, just we'll keep everyone in prayer and hope that we can get through this virus and that we can move forward. If not anything else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
Second.
All right. So tonight has to be the earliest that we have been through in a long time. So thank you very much.